Tim and Stephanie, are we good to go? Do you guys need more time to practice?
Today, I think Stephanie's all good to go. She's all practiced up.
She's a quick learner, that Stephanie, so.
She sure is.
All right, well, I'm gonna go ahead and pre-share and I'm gonna open up the meeting for the public. So here we go.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. This meeting is called to order. Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Administrative Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting form format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. And clerk, would you take the role, please?
Interim City Attorney Code.
Here.
Interim City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Fever.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Thank you. Comments, questions from the commission?
Will you text Renanne and see if Becky's having an issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Rebecca doctors have trouble getting on. She's our HR person.
Whoa, 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 there is talking going on. So you might want to mute the discussion. I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner Logan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple items I, I think this might just be reminders, as much as anything, but we've had a bit of transition since the first of the year and, and I think one of the first things I'd, I'd like to bring up and just again, more reminder than request for consensus or anything of that nature. I think it was on the 19th of January and put it in context, if you recall, we, the commission had a discussion about staffing at munis. It was that meeting. At the end of it, as we were considering setting future agendas, I brought up the idea of maybe having a bit of a discussion presentation like we had just had on munis only with the police department. And, you know, as you recall, we had had some, you know, in November and December had heard about some pretty significant staffing issues within the police department in terms of retention and recruitment. And at that meeting in January, there was consensus, I think myself, the mayor and Commissioner Dean were all amenable to, to the idea of that possibly showing up at a future administrative meeting. There's that. And then on, I believe it was the 14th of February, I had in commission comments brought up the idea of similar presentation discussion about sewer and water, sewer and water line insurance programs. We talked about it previously, but not, didn't really have an understanding of, you know, what might be possible. Programs might be out there, what potentials might be out there. And so I asked the commission at that time if there was interest in looking into that. And, and there was, I think, a majority or all of us who were present said they were comfortable with it. So but in the meantime, we've you know, our previous city manager resigned and then we had an interim manager prior to our, the interim manager we currently have. So I just wanted to make sure that those two things didn't get lost in that process. So those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm sure if you put it, we can put it on future agenda. If you just pass it on to the clerks and see how best we can get it going. Any other comments, discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Oh, I think Eric had his hand up before I blurted, so I can wait if he prefer.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I, I think I'm again supportive of both those discussions. I believe that Mr. Burton had talked about the staffing, a staffing market study, starting to conduct that kind of process with the budget. And I would suspect that includes the police department. But I'm wondering if maybe we could get a clarification on that first.
Commissioner Fever. You're muted. You are muted.
You know, I hate this mute stuff, but anyway, now that I'm back on not mute, I, I want to support Commissioner Logan and Commissioner Dean. But I believe a, some sort of review of what's going on in the police department, which should be separate, not necessarily separated from, but should be separate of in a discussion regarding the budget, because I think there are questions out there that need to be asked about staffing and how we pay for additional staff that we need. And I definitely support Commissioner Logan's idea about insurance for water and sewer links to to private properties in the city of Helena. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Manager Burton.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Yes, as a part of the budget, for sure, we'll be looking at police staffing trends, et cetera. We can bring a discussion forward prior to that in terms of the budget process. Starting to talk to you guys and others, department heads relative to the priorities coming forward and the necessity. And we obviously won't be able to get it done for this budget, but to return, retain professional services to do a market-based study so that we can understand where we're at relative to the market and our ability to recruit and retain qualified people for the various city jobs, including police officers. So I anticipate we'll have a discussion through this budget. We have, and I think you've been notified that set aside four two-hour meetings to start at the beginning and finish at the end relative to review of each and every departmental budget in the city. It gives you the opportunity to engage the directors to look at the revenues, expenses, cash balances, and have significant policy discussions as we work our way through that budget. I do know as well that our folks continue to review options relative to water and sewer insurance. I don't think we're quite ready to make a recommendation to the commission, but that will be coming on a relatively soon administrative agenda for, for us to present the information, you folks to have a policy level discussion and we'll seek further direction at that meeting. And I think that'll happen within the next next or the following administrative agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have any other commission comments? Thank you. Recommendations from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Susan Stephens.
Hi, yeah, I'll just report on what we've been talking about in Citizens Council. We are also starting to review our budget proposals to submit to the commission. We've been dealing with the West Side development. We've had a few meetings about that, that discussion. Also, we're returning to in-person meetings. It'll probably be a hybrid because we have so many members, it's hard to find a place to, to put us all. And then we're also trying to do more outreach to our constituents. We have some money that is in, that is in our budget. And we're all gonna try to reach out more because a lot of people in the city don't really understand our function or even realize we're there. So those are the main things that we're dealing with right now. Any questions with anybody?
Comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Reed.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a question, just a comment. I just want to say I appreciate hearing that there will be outreach efforts made. I think it's fantastic. I think it's true. There's a lot of people who don't understand ACC and I'm looking forward to hearing more about how that goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Representative Stephens? Thank you, Representative Stephens. City Manager Report, Manager Burton.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm very, very pleased to introduce a couple of new employees this afternoon. As I think I've talked to each of you that even prior to my official beginning with the City of Helena, I was participating in interviews for the city attorney position and the community development director position. This afternoon, I'd like to to introduce the two candidates whom we offered the job to, and they have accepted. And I think that they're going to be very, very talented additions to, to the management team here at the City of Helena. Mayor, I'd like to start with Rebecca Doctor Becky. And Becky is joining the city after spending over 20 years with the Montana Department of Fish, Wildlife and Parks. She has served as FWP's Chief Legal Counsel since 2011. Becky will start her new role on May 9. And I know that Becky is on Zoom and Mayor, with your permission, I'd ask that Becky be allowed to introduce herself and talk about her, her work experience and and then maybe the opportunity for the commission to welcome her to the City of Helena team.
Thank you, Manager Burton. Ms. Doctor, would you, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. Thank you, City Manager, for that introduction. I am pleased and very honored to be serving the city and Mr. Burton as my supervisor and colleague and the commission. I have spent since 2011, so 11 years as the Chief Legal Counsel at the Department of Fish, Wildlife and Parks, during which time I, I was the lead counsel for the Fish and Wildlife Commission. I also was the lead counsel for the Parks and Recreation, Outdoor Recreation Board in that role. I served mostly for procedural matters, but also for lands processes and enforcement issues and several other things that I think will serve me well in my service to you and the city. I look forward to learning. I have a lot to learn. I'm eager and excited and I hope that I get to meet you all in an individual basis as well as in my role as the city attorney. And I spend a lot of time on the trails here and I have lived here since 2000. City of Helena is my home. I work here, I play here, and now I'm honored to serve with you and making it as good a place as it can be and continuing to, to keep it that way. So unless you have any questions, that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Doctor, and welcome. On behalf of the commission, we say welcome and we're looking forward to working with you. I'm sure they will have questions that, after as we move on to the, the next new hire. Manager Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. And the next introduction, Mayor, is Christopher Brink. And Christopher has been hired as our next Community Development Director. Christopher will be moving to Helena from South Carolina, where he is currently the Community Development Director for Pickens County. Chris has over 25 years' experience in community development, including the past 16 years in Pickens County. Chris's first day will be, will be May 16. And with that, Mayor, with your permission, I turn it over to Chris to introduce himself to the commission.
Mr. Brink, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Thank you, Mayor or Manager Burton. I am honored and humbled by this experience that I've gotten to meet city staff and going through this process. And we are anxious to get out to Helena, call Helen or a home. That means something to me. I've been a true public servant my entire public, or my entire career. I am fiercely loyal to my employer. I'll be fiercely loyal to you. But more importantly, I'm going to be fiercely loyal to my community. You will have nothing but the best from me. Like I said, I'm a dedicated public servant, looking forward to getting out to Helena, calling Helena my home and providing a small piece or my small part in making Helena or keeping Helena exactly the great place that it is today. So good afternoon from, for you guys and good evening from South Carolina.
All right. Well, we also welcome you to the city and we're looking forward to working with you. Manager Burton.
Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
At this time, we'll open up for public comments. Yes, direct Commissioner, Commissioner Logan, come on, it's been a long week, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for the manager at what do you think about the idea of each of us possibly meeting just in a, to introduce ourselves to each of the new hires that you've introduced today?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, I think that's a great idea. And we would help schedule that with the commission, with the individual commissioners and the mayor when the two new, the city attorney and the Director of Public Works start, if that timeframe works for you. I think that would be a wonderful way to start off the, the position with the city.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm hoping you meant Community Development Director, not Public Works, because we're.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Ryan Lila is on the call, man.
Thank you for the correction, Mayor. That's exactly what I meant.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, I see no hands raised at this time, and I've received no written public comment.
Thank you. City Clerk update.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Welcome. I just wanted to do a quick procedural reappointment of several members of the Board of Adjustment this evening. Due to clerical error, these members that have been serving admirably on the Board of Adjustment for the past year were never officially reappointed at a, at a commission meeting. All of these members have been contacted and have agreed to continue serving in their capacity through the end of their second term, at which time we would start recruiting for new members, as it is our policy to offer two full terms and one interim term to those members of our boards. I would say also that we were looking at potentially opening up this recruitment slightly earlier for the Board of Adjustment than we normally would, as these boards tend to be more difficult to find qualified applicants for the vacancies. So that's something to keep in mind as we approach the first expiration dates, which will be in October of 23. So unless you have any further questions, I believe the deputy clerk had forwarded on packets with the information of those members, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments?
It appears we have no public comment on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Department, direction, feedback, general review, and this is information only planner, Michael McConnell.
And Mayor, if I may just introduce the broader topic here, and it's informational only, but I think when I'm asking the departments to look forward relative to your workload, I think it's important that we generally review the land use processes. Following Michael's presentation with Ms. Merrell Gangler, I'd like to review a report from Headwaters Economics that shows statewide and county growth patterns from 2000 to 2018, or actually 1990 to 2018, which I think is very pertinent to what's going on in the Helena area and beyond. And that will be followed by a brief presentation. And that will be followed by a brief presentation by the Public Works Director, Ryan Leland, on city utility capacities and other challenges around the boundaries of the city of Helena. It's informational only. I think that it's critical, though, that you have this information and build on it. It also shows where inquiries for land use questions coming before the commission are happening within the city of Helena right now, and I think it will help give you somewhat of a feel for the potential workload that's coming your way relative to those types of questions. So, Mayor, with that broad introduction, I would turn it over to Michael and Lucy to begin the discussion, and please, this is for your information. If you have questions, Mayor, interrupt us. And this is really background information on, for the benefit of of the commission and the mayor.
Thank you. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, and Mr. Burton. So, yeah, we were just asked to put together some, some very general, some generic information on our land use processes to, you know, focusing on the ones that come before the commission more regularly. You can see the list on the right there. I'll be focusing mostly on annexations, subdivisions, and zone changes. But I did want you all to be aware that conditional use permits do go to commission fairly regularly, but they're generally more straightforward than the top three. Also amended plaits on very rare occasions and in very specific circumstances also go to the commission for their consideration. Typically, they are accompanied by, say, a regular vacation. One other thing to be aware of as I go through this or we go through this tonight is that there will always be exceptions to what we're presenting here tonight. This is meant to be just a general overview of our most common applications and situations. So annexations, as I'm sure we're all aware, are by and large how we grow as a city. Right? We review these for compliance with our standards and to ensure that we have you know, adequate capacity in our various systems, whether it be water, sewer, transportation, et cetera, in order to effectively and safely serve the property being proposed for annexation. So I've sort of outlined the general process, because review, and we create the we create the staff reports, which includes any conditions that are being recommended by staff. These are typically road or utility type improvements that are needed to serve the property. Though if there is say, a park donation or any other type of public land component, there might be other conditions like fuels mitigation or weed control, or really any condition that addresses a specific impact that this property will have on our city services. So with the growth policy guides all of our annexation, generally all of our land use decisions as well. So there will be a section in each of each staff report that is created that analyzes the proposal based on the growth policy. So typically, there have been standards boundary in the future land use map are going to be frequent talking points and displayed probably in that discussion. There are numerous, I think, seven or eight different kinds of annexations that are possible for the city to engage in. But by, you know, far and away, the most common annexation type that we have is annexation by petition. This method of annexation does not require a public hearing on its own. But if the annexation is accompanied by a pre-zone or a major subdivision, we will often roll the annexation into that public hearing. It will still have separate votes, but it's sometimes difficult to break up an annexation from its accompanying projects. So major subdivisions, I think, are going to be usually the most complicated project type that we have. There are a lot of moving parts, and the process is, you know, by and large dictated by the state through the MCA. So I think recently there's been a couple subdivision, you know, the timeline extension request, and that's usually because we cannot meet the statutory timeframes, right? For minor subdivision, we have thirty-five working day review period. I, after it gets deemed sufficient until a decision is made, thirty-five days. For majors, it varies depending on the lots, but the most we have is eighty working days from sufficiency to a commission decision. So the internal review is, as you can see, completeness, sufficiency, and then a general review. Not going to get into those too much, but focus on your role and what is going to be presented to you. So these reviews determine impacts from the proposal, and staff will propose mitigation conditions for each. The staff report is created focusing on an analysis of the six oh eight review criteria, you know, agriculture, groundwater user facilities, public services, public health and safety, et cetera. Also included in that is going to be a growth policy analysis and any impacts identified and the resulting conditions will also be included in the staff report. Major subdivisions do go before both the Parks Board and the Planning Board for their recommendation to the city commission. The Parks Board is going to be looking at whether or not the applicant's proposal of, say, a land donation is appropriate or a cash and move donation is appropriate, and they're going to look at their parks plan and the different criteria that's within that plan to identify, you know, whichever is most appropriate. The planning board is obviously going to look at the subdivision in its entirety, looking at much the same information as you will, and provide their recommendation based on that. So the process itself is quasi judicial and does require a public hearing. The findings of fact, which is the basis of the staff report, it's the outcome, it outlines what conditions are being proposed and why, and satisfaction of those conditions then form the basis for a final file application. Minor subdivisions are also quasi judicial but do not require a public hearing. In fact, the MCA says you cannot have one, so that's one of the major differences between major and minor subdivisions. This was, let me step back. Major subdivisions are six or more lots, and minor subdivisions are going to be five or less. So just for some context. Some other differences, minors are not required to submit a full environmental assessment, but will include in their application and now in analysis of the probable impacts, and that's again based on the six oh eight criteria. The review process is the same, although after sufficiency, there are different timelines. Like I said, minor subdivisions are thirty-five days. Staff report is still created outlining the criteria and detailing the reasonings for any conditions, and the growth policy analysis is going to be very similar. Minor subdivisions do still go to the Parks Board for their recommendation, just like a major, but they are not required to go to the planning board. So from time to time, and these are fairly rare, subdivision, subdivisions will include variances from our our city of Helena subdivision regulations. So they're reviewed within the subdivision review framework. Those staff, we won't provide a recommendation. If it's a major subdivision, though, the planning board will include that in there, in their recommendation. That's generally because the staff stance is that, you know, we have subdivision regulations for a reason, and we feel a project should conform to them. So there are, it's understood that there are situations and circumstances in which a variance is appropriate, but the burden of proving that the subdivision or the proposal needs that variance is on the applicant. And you can see here on the left, there are five review criteria. Public health, safety, and general welfare, or injurious to adjacent properties, the unnecessary hardship, there's no substantial increase to public cost, and that it conforms with the growth policy. Excuse me. Variances are, like I said, reviewed in the same form and fashion as the subdivision itself, but there is a separate vote, and, you know, as we've kind of just seen, has the potential to alter any subdivision proposal in some cases dramatic ways. So the subdivision could be denied or delayed in that case, so that it can be redesigned or evaluated in the case that variance would be denied. And within the application materials, the applicant will be submitting their responses to each of these criteria. Another common application type, zone changes. They're reviewed for compliance with our standards relating utilities, transportation, fire, et cetera, and also for alignment with the review criteria that is also outlined in MCA. Again, the staff report is created with the growth policy review component included. Zone changes do go to the zoning commission for their recommendation always, and that will be included in any packet that makes it to the city commission, obviously. So the commission then reviews the proposals, but does not impose any conditions. It's an up or down vote. If this zoning proposal is approved or it is not. There are two meetings that, you know, related to zone changes. One is the first passage, that is a public hearing, and then the final passage is not a public hearing. We've got a couple of those actually on the agenda for this coming Monday. So since it's not a public hearing, it does not require additional or new notification or engagement methods.
And, Michael, I'd like to just jump in here a little bit, because a couple of apps have come up. That this presentation's just a general presentation on the land use processes, and it has nothing to do with, with a particular single subdivision. I just want to make that clear.
Yes, definitely. Thank you for jumping in there. For any project that we do, there is an element of public outreach and public engagement. Right? For major subdivisions, we are, we haven't in the past, we are starting to post all of our materials on the website. We send certified letters to adjacent property owners. We post a legal, an independent record, and we also place signs on site, and those are the timeframes in which those need to be done, and that's prior to a city commission meeting or a public hearing, I guess, in general, whether it be for the planning board or for the city commission. Minors definitely have a lower bar to meet for that public outreach. We're still going to put our materials on our website going forward. But we, we also send letters that are not certified to adjacent property owners and post a sign on site. Generally, if a minor subdivision is included in, say, an annexation or a zone change, we will include that bit of information in a notice to the IR. Just as a footnote, this zone change also includes a, includes a minor subdivision, something like that. So zone changes do require the public hearing rights, so we're still posting everything to the website, and we're sending letters to property owners within a hundred and fifty feet. And this is different than subdivisions for a specific reason. There's a section of MCA that allows property owners within a hundred and fifty feet to be party to a petition or protest of the zoning vote. And since that distance is set out in MCA, we want to include those folks and make, just to make sure that everyone gets notified and everyone has their has a means for recourse. Annexations, like I said, by petition, do not require a public hearing, so aren't noticed in the same way, but like I said, will include that annexation is taking place with our subdivision or with our pre-zone notifications. In summary, annexations, we're going for a resolution of intent at the first commission meeting, then the applicant will satisfy all the conditions related to the annexation, and then it goes back to commission for the final annexation resolution. Pre-zones or zone changes are legislative. The outcome is an ordinance. They also have two meetings, the first public hearing, and then the final passage, which is not. Major subdivisions and minor subdivisions are also quasi judicial. They result in a preliminary plat. We can impose conditions on those plaits. And then once those conditions are met, and a number of other conditions that are in our subregs, they then go to, go back to commission for final plat approval. Variances also quasi judicial, get voted on during during those same meetings. And they may alter the preliminary plat in some cases significantly. So Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, that's all I've got for you. If there are any questions, Lucy, or I, or any one of the staff members who will try to answer those, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Michael, for that presentation. I think that was actually super helpful. And I don't know if it's possible, but it would be great if we could put this presentation maybe on the community development website. I think this might be actually very helpful for the general public to have a look at who may not be in attendance. I did have, have a question, though, and it has to do with the capacity review and potentially with the growth policy analysis. So I'm wondering, do we, so I know we're evaluating particularly capacity. From what I understand, we're evaluating, like, the physical capacity of our services, but are we also analyzing, like, the fiscal, the financial impact capacity? Particularly, not the initial costs, which I know developers are more or less on the hook for, but really the ongoing cost, so that we actually are covering the maintenance that's going to be necessary. One of the things I've been thinking a lot about is how we obviously manage what MCA dictates to us, but then also, you know, we have something like forty million dollars in deferred maintenance of water and wastewater infrastructure in our community, so and what that says to me is, you know, we have not been keeping up with that maintenance, and I don't know if it's just, you know, a physical issue, or if it's, you know, a financial issue. But does that kind of analysis happen when you do the capacity review or the growth policy review?
Here, not in terms of the growth policy, but this is Tim Burton, if I may. I think that this is an ongoing and significant discussion. And one way to, one way to look at it is, following the budget process this year, we're going to review every capital plan that is pertinent to our operations across all city departments. And, you know, they're pretty good capital plans, and it shows, it shows where we need to invest, and it prioritizes those over time. There's not a government that I'm aware of that ever funds capital plans at a hundred percent, and that's where the policy decisions come in at the commission level. And you may have a top priority in water and another one in parks. Uh, and you may have a top priority in water and another one in parks. And you guys work out where the limited public resources will go. Whether you raise rates, whether you bond an improvement and that discussion is coming. And a part and parcel to that will be uh, when you decide how to allocate your ARPA funds, uh, you'll make the decisions on where that money actually goes. The other discussion that becomes important is that if in two thousand, the city is at a population of twenty thousand, and this is just a made up example. And you've got your ongoing fixed costs and they rise at the rate of inflation. And twenty years later, you're at the same population level. All that increased cost goes to the existing residents of the city. Uh, and if the city's growing, obviously you can spread that cost to a wider population. Uh, so those are ongoing analysis that I think we need to continue to talk about. Uh, because there's different levels, whether it's just the hard infrastructure, the O N M costs. How do we split or spread the cost, uh, relative to any land use decisions? And the other part of it is how many residents are using our services and don't pay at all? So I think they're all in and related at some level. And I think it's just an issue that we have to keep working on and bringing forward to the commission. Uh, so that we can understand first of all, our capacity. And secondly, what's the associated cost to existing residences? We get requests to grow and, and we will get a lot of those requests. So, uh, Commissioner Dean, I, I think the best answer that we can provide you right now is to just say that that's an ongoing analysis. And I think it's a discussion that we need to keep in front of the commission as we walk down the road.
That's super helpful. I just, and for context too, I'm just thinking about, you know, how how do we, I mean, what policy levers do we have to help ensure not just the well-being of the community within, let's say, the next decade, but the well-being of the community in the next fifty and a hundred years? Um, I think a really good example of, you know, the community decisions being made like fifty years ago to not require sidewalks and we're, you know, bearing the cost of that almost two generations later. So I've been thinking a lot about how do we ensure that we're actually setting up our community for long-term success? Not just in the immediate, which I think is normally where, you know, your head is of what do we need right now? But what Paul, and it obviously any commission can change any policies, but it'd be great if we could put ourselves in a position where fifty years from now, they're not having to have these same kind of, um, challenges, maybe.
Yeah. And I, I think that with part of the presentation today, uh, I think that you'll see that that there is a lot of work that's been done, that's looking out decades, uh, down the road. Uh, and I want to make sure that you're aware of that. Not that all the challenges go away, but in many respects, uh, we're positioned probably a lot better than a lot, a lot of Western cities in the United States. And that will be a part of our discussion before we wrap up today and critically important stuff.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments? Do it. Do you have any public comments? Adam Clerk.
Mayor Collins. Commissioner Fever here would like to ask a question. Is that possible?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Sorry. Um, I have two questions and, um, Mr. McConnell, I was interested in one thing that went by pretty quick. Uh, suggestion about environmental impact statements and reviews. Um, and I didn't follow that precisely in the city of Helena, because I had noticed that that was necessary in the past. Uh, maybe it's always been that way, uh, that it's been necessary. I just don't recall that in the one subdivision, um, that we have already considered. Well, several actually, but the one that's controversial about an environmental impact statement. Uh, so where does that fit into this? And I have another question after that.
Sure. So a full environmental assessment is maybe not the best term for it, I, I don't believe, but basically provides analysis from the applicant's perspective on different ways in which the proposal could impact the city and the neighborhood that it's going in. Um, impacts to non-motorized transportation. It definitely looks at the review criteria. Um, the difference between a, a major subdivision and a minor subdivision is that the minor only has to provide that, um, list of probable impacts. Whereas the major needs to provide the, the full, the full EA. Um, did that, that answer your question sufficiently or?
No, I think so. I, I guess, um, in my mind, I hadn't paid as much attention to that as an environmental issue, but obviously traffic, uh, density, water sewer, all of that would be, I think, part of that. Along with foreign fauna that might be in the, in the neighborhood. Uh, I, I get that. My next question has to do with the zoning commission. The, the city commission has the authority to decide the zoning commission's recommendations or have no account or to accept them. What is its role then if it decides one way and the city commission wants to go another completely? I mean, is there no, if you will, directive from the zoning commission whatsoever that compels the city commission to act in a certain fashion?
I think they're there to advise the commission, so.
That's correct. Um, yeah, I mean, they're an advisory board, right? Much like the parks board is or the planning board is. Um, the, as I understand it, the commission can and does often make their own decision, right? Um, they're just providing their recommendation based on how they are viewing the materials.
Thank you. Attorney courts, court. You're muted.
It's a problem.
Yeah, sorry about that. Mayor Commissioners, I was going to answer the question that Mr. McConnell just answered. And he did provide an accurate sufficient answer, so I won't double up on that. Thank you.
You bet. Are you done, uh, Commissioner Fever?
Uh, well, yes and no. And obviously it is an, uh, an issue at the moment. I think folks ought to know the zoning commission is advisory only.
Um, I think everybody knows that, Commissioner.
Well, Mayor Collins, I just would repeat, I think folks ought to know that the zoning commission is advisory only. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the commission? Go ahead, Commissioner Dean.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Fever's first question prompted another one for me. Um, on the environmental analysis, is it within MCA that directs the developer to be the person that contracts someone to do that analysis? I've always thought it's been interesting on a lot, I mean, a lot of projects that we get that I think that the developer should bore the, bear the cost, but it's it's always interesting. Are we getting an objective um, analysis if it's, you know, coming from the developer? And I see, I might've asked the wrong question because I see Eric putting his hand.
You have the floor.
I hope I didn't get us in trouble, Eric.
Mayor and Commissioner Dean, uh, the MCA does require the environmental assessment and the different types of environmental assessments uh, for major and minor subdivisions. And yes, that is generally always as far as I've seen commissioned by the developer because it's part of the information and documentation that the developer needs to submit to the city before the city will even consider the application. Uh, we will analyze it, uh, but I don't know that we have ever hired like an outside expert to analyze it. Uh, at least not in my experience.
I guess that just prompts a follow-up question. Is it? Would it be within, I'm just, this is an admin meeting, so I'm just speaking very broadly. Would it be in the ability of the commission to say, you know, you, like we have, you know, they're going to pay a, someone to do this, but can instead we say, you know, it has to be, uh, you know, outside objective? Is there any way to ensure objectivity from the consultant?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I, I wouldn't want to deviate from what's required by the MCA. Uh, we could look into that further, but my gut tells me just sitting here today that we don't want to deviate too far from the MCA because the MCA essentially is enabling legislation that tells the city, hey, you are allowed to act in this certain area. And you are allowed to, uh, enact ordinances that are in compliance with what we've, the, the guidelines that we've set out in the Montana code.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Manager.
Yes, here I'm gonna, I'm gonna, thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna share my screen. Can you all see, uh, the Headwaters Economics Report?
Yes, sir.
I know that that was sent out to the mayor and the commissioners and all the department heads, and it's a little dated. Uh, it was published, it was updated in twenty twenty, uh, but I think originally published in twenty eighteen. And it's very interesting that the focus of this report is Montana losing open space. But there's some other elements of this report I want to point out to the commission. And so this is in the context of what's going on in the state of Montana, what's going on in Lewis and Clark County. And in many respects, how does that affect the city of Helena? It's interesting to know that there are other, uh, tabs up here relative to public lands, outdoor rec, economic development. And when you have time, uh, look through that, there's some very interesting information on those tabs, but for today's, uh, meeting, I'm just going to focus on, uh, you know, the front pages here and it's pretty interesting to note that one quarter of all homes in Montana were constructed since the year two thousand.
Wow.
And this is pretty interesting as well. It shows, uh, the growth pattern in Montana from nineteen hundred uh, up to twenty eighteen. And I'll just click on it here. And, you know, that's pretty dramatic growth and we're also all experiencing the growth of the last uh, recent years and, and clearly this type of growth is affecting uh, you with your roles in terms of governing and what's going on. And it's not just land use decisions. It's how do we respond to emergency services and fire? Uh, how does it affect, uh, victim services in the city attorney's office, uh, et cetera? Uh, when you toggle down here, it also shows the same, the homes built in Montana, three hundred and forty-four thousand total homes in twenty eighteen. Twenty-four percent were built since two thousand. That's an incredible amount of growth going on throughout the state of Montana. And for Montana counties, driving home construction, percent of homes per county from nineteen ninety to twenty eighteen. Lewis and Clark County is number six. And since that time, there's been that eight thousand fifty-five homes built in Lewis and Clark County. I know that you manage, you own and manage a lot of open space. Uh, since nineteen ninety, one million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand acres, eight hundred acres uh, have been converted from open space to housing. And more than sixty percent of homes constructed in Montana were built outside of incorporated cities. And nearly half of the homes were constructed on large lots more than ten acres. So obviously this is about open space, but I'm also looking at what are the impacts to the city of Helena in the middle of Lewis and Clark County when we see a lot of that growth right on our boundaries? And how does that growth occur? And what are the impacts of that? And we're going to get there through Ryan's, uh, presentation as well. But this is really important background information that we need to talk about today and continue uh, to talk about, uh, as we further refine it going on, uh, down into the future. If we look at the data here and let's go to Lewis and Clark County. Acres of open space converted over sixty-five thousand acres from open space to housing. Count of homes in twenty eighteen, twenty-one thousand forty-nine. Eight thousand fifty-five new homes, uh, since nineteen ninety. Seventy-seven percent of those new homes are built outside the city of Helena. And we see it in the North Valley. We see it in all around, uh, the city of Helena. And so I think it's important to to further discuss those impacts, um, in Ryan's uh, presentation. And, uh, with that, I think I've kind of set the stage that with what's happening outside the city of Helena is clearly impacting the city of Helena and the policy-related issues, uh, that, that the governing body deals with and will be dealing with on into the future. So with that, Mayor, I'd like to turn it over to Ryan. He's put together a map of inquiry where he's, we're getting around the city of Helena, uh, that will uh, potentially, if they come to fruition, require commission decisions. Uh, he's going to talk about, uh, the capacity of our infrastructure and where we sit today. Which is part and parcel to part of at least the question Commissioner Dean had talked about. And, uh, with that, I set the stage for Ryan and, uh, Ryan, uh, you can take over now.
Thank you, Mayor Commission. Uh, just to add on and continue from what, uh, City Manager Burton had brought up is these are inquiries that we had recently, you know, some of them are pre-apps, some of them, um, have not come to fruition, but they're all being talked about and they're going to be coming to you. So there's a lot of land use that is going to be coming, uh, to the commission that needs to look at. Just to point out some of them, this is the west side. We have some sewer mains that will be connected uh, for what we did on the west side. There's vacant lots out there for phase one, phase two, where we installed the mains. Uh, there's a lot of single-family, uh, houses that will be coming in, um, in that side and some subdivisions. We have the Reber subdivision that is up above La Grand Cannon. The big ones that you'll be seeing and talking about is Padberry Ranch. That is in between where, uh, Mountain View Meadows is located, where, um, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield, all those houses out there, back to the city, Padberry Ranch. So there's a lot of interest in getting moving on that one. Uh, we do have infrastructure over in that area, so it is good infill. And then going north, you have R E Demers Church, Stone Meadows Two, um, some more, uh, apartment buildings, uh, out by Lowe's and, uh, and, uh, uh, Super One Foods out there with the New Kings Commons. And then you will start to see more, uh, of what like Mr. Burton was talking about. Is if you have the infrastructure in place, people are going to want to use it. We are going to see more head lane um, requests. A couple more have come into my office and will be coming before the sys, the, uh, commission. Are they, will you allow them to connect to that sewer main? So these are the inquiries that we have had. Um, lots of subdivisions, single-family apartments, um, commercial development, everything along those lines. So on this map, I'd be happy to answer any questions before I get into the water rights and and see our pattern of growth that we've, uh, experienced in the Helena Valley.
Comments or questions from the commission? Please continue, Mr. Leland.
All right, I'll just change. Where I was gonna sho, share. Okay, we've already seen that map. Um, and then I wanted to talk about where we are uh, positioned. This is Commissioner Dean asked for us, uh, are we looking into the future? And in the past, this is where I think the city of Helena sits better than anyone is the water rights we have available. Is the water rights we have available to us, I don't see of any other city in the west that has these types of water rights. For capacity, not necessarily what we have treatment ability to do, but we have a lot of water rights. Available to us so that we can expand growth in a sustainable manner that's better than the sprawl. With exempt wells that we see out there, and some of them that we'll go through is the Missouri River Treatment Plant, it is our peaking. Plant, but we get water from Canyon Ferry, which we have a contract with the Bureau of Rec. For all the municipal reserves in Canyon Ferry itself for forty years. Signed back in two thousand five and then renewable for forty years after that, so we have eighty years of water. Going forward and we can't exceed the three point six billion gallons of water per year. That comes down to ten million gallons a day, you know, and we're seeing in the winter time about three point five. And peaking up into sixteen million gallons per day, so that's a significant water right that we have. That we can use and pretty much have capacity at our plant to be able to use all of that. Water right if necessary. Then go up Ten Mile Creek, up Bramine, I, we have the number one and two surface water rights. In Ten Mile Creek with all the diversions that come into it, many Ha Ha Beaver Creek. Moose Creek, just some of those, we have six intakes that we take in to the Ten Mile. Diversion, and then we also have Ten Mile diversion itself. And then we have the two reservoirs that do not count towards our water rights, we have Scott Reservoir and also Chessman. That we collect some of the runoff through the Red Mountain Flume, those do not count towards this water right. But we have about eight point nine million gallons a day, and that's basically the capacity of what the watershed can do. We don't have any more treatment capacity that we can increase because there just isn't that much water to be treated, there's no more that we could. Take out of that watershed, we do leave some water into Ten Mile with the. With Fish Wildlife and Parks of State of Montana to try and help with the fisheries and keep up that ecosystem and good for the environment. Some of the other water rights that we have is Eureka Well, this is up West Main, there is a well, and we have water rights. To two point three million gallons a day, what we are putting into the system is about half a million gallons, we're looking to. Do some improvements to that system and see if we can get up to about a million gallons a day, that's a gravity system, we do pump it. But we do not have to treat that water other than chlorine, so it is a very inexpensive source that we have available. And what we're doing right now is we have a substantial groundwater reserve. That we are developing right now, it's approximately seven, seven thousand gallons a minute or three point six million gallons a day. So we are looking at drilling wells out at the Missouri River Treatment Plant, some of the other wells that we have used for parks. Have taken that reservation, and it needs to be perfected by twenty twenty-five, so we're really moving ahead. Quite fast to see if we can get as much of that water right reserved as possible, so we need to perfect it, get it into our system. Which is a, will be a good secondary source to help us if there is ever a fire or a substantial drought. On water rights and then get into the.
Mayor, just, and Ryan, if I may, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Okay, so to put this into context, we've really reserved. A substantial amount of water that the city commission controls. And where, where we'll have to pay attention is if we need to expand. The delivery of clean water, then we have to expand the water treatment plants. But we've got, we've got the quantity and the availability to do so. For instance, the city of Bozeman, growing like they are with their water rights, they're presently at capacity. They're in a position completely different from us where they have to go out and acquire additional water rights somehow. Provide water to their residents as Bozeman grows. And Ryan, just wanna confirm, is what I just said correct?
That is correct, they're looking at having to go all the way to Tosted to continue their expansion of. Growth that they are experiencing. And then get into the expansion is like Tim was talking about, if you look in the Helena Valley. These are the domestic air or, not all of them are exempt wells, but a majority of these wells, this is all the wells in. In Lewis and Clark or Helena Valley, not Lewis and Clark County, Helena Valley. And you can see Helena here, and then these are all the, basically the domestic wells that come into the single-family residents. That are out there, and then this is the septic systems. So these are unsustainable to continue to go forward, and this is where the city of Helena with the clean water and being able to. Have the delivery of all of those water rights will be the sustainable future and what is going to. Have the control and the power that the city commission will have.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to add some information here as well. One of the critical functions relative to sustainability of the city of Helena is water. And we've got the water rights, we've got the ability to treat what we need today. I'm sure at some point in the future we'll have to expand our treatment capacity, but if that's the case, we still have the water. The water rights. What Ryan just showed you with the exempt wells and the exempt septic tanks is a huge issue to the city of Helena. And every other municipality in Montana, the law was changed in nineteen ninety-three. Which prior to that, and the constitution requires the state of Montana protects senior water rights. Our water rights go back to somewhere around the eighteen sixties with the acquisition of the New York Water Company. Every other municipality in Montana has senior water rights and. The other organization that carries the most senior water rights in Montana are agricultural operations. Particularly cattle operations. When Ryan showed you that map with all the red dots, and I'm assuming that's somewhere around fifteen thousand exempt wells. Prior to the law changing in ninety-three. We allowed exempt wells to proceed for de minimis agricultural use. Ninety-five percent of all wells today, and they're exempted by the state of Montana. Without any protection to city, senior water right holders, the city of Helena has no mechanism to protest. That that water just be given to somebody else, and. So there's no adequate protection, which is required by the constitution for senior water right holders. On the other side of that, Ryan, if we can go to the septic tanks. So if ninety-five percent of the exempt wells since ninety-three are for residential use, each one of those wells comes with a. Septic tank. And what has occurred in the Helena Valley and beyond, we can look at the Flathead, we can look at Sealy Lake, we can look at Echo Lake and just. Look at the pattern throughout the state of Montana. If there's fifteen thousand septic tanks, they've all been permitted one at a time. Fifteen thousand different times without a cumulative analysis by the state of Montana. On the degradation to the ground and surface water in the Lake Helena watershed. EPA, DEQ have already measured the fact that the. The discharge collectively from those septic tanks. Is about equal to the discharge of Helena's wastewater treatment plant, the difference is. We have a high mechanical level of treatment, and we discharge water that's substantially cleaner than the water that we pull out and treat. For residents. And. When you look at this. It's against the law regardless who's discharging to degrade Montana ground and surface waters. This is a serious issue, I think, for the state of Montana, not only in this valley, but well beyond it. As to what happens. When these systems fail, or when some authority says, you know, you no longer can degrade Montana ground and surface waters. That then the developers are all gone, and that then becomes an obligation of the homeowner, and, and who is gonna be asked to respond? If and when that occurs, and I think the primary organization that's gonna be asked to respond is the city of Helena. Not that, not that you're gonna re, ever ask the present residents of the city of Helena to pay the bill. But consider this throughout the state of Montana and the scope and size of this unfunded liability. When. When the status quo is no longer acceptable, and I think that it's a real risk to the state of Montana. I think it's a real risk to the housing market of the state of Montana, and. With this picture and you, and you look at the investments that the cities made into sewer and water, and we talk about sustainability. The city of Helen is in a really good position. With water quantity and quality moving forward, and that's one of the most important issues relative to sustainability. And. I just want to paint the picture, not answer the question today. But that there are serious issues outside our boundary that we need to be aware of.
Thank you. Director Lila, are you done?
I am ready for questions if there are any.
Thank you, any comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fever.
Thank you very much, you know, thank you, Ryan Leland, for your report. I had not seen that map before of all the proposed subdivisions that might, well, not proposed, that might develop over time. Some of there are in obvious spots, you would expect that to happen, it's inevitable, and some maybe not so much, but that's all undeveloped property right now. At least so far as I know, with maybe the exception of the head lane and the alfalfa road issue that we even looked at just the other day. There's nothing, no development out there, I assume, maybe much like the, the proposed west side subdivision, it's undeveloped. But, sorry, City Manager Burton, you chilled me to the bone, if I look at the valley, I think, well, okay. No, the citizens of Helena can't pay for the issues in the valley. Without the valley figuring out how it will connect to our system. And the only way I see that happening is through annexation, and I know there's a heartburn for that sort of thing, people live in the valley, so they don't have to pay. For city utilities, and so they, they've taken in some respect a kind of a free opportunity. To develop that at a much lower cost potentially than what they would here in town. That's a, that's going to be an issue long after I've left the commission, and maybe after all of us here on the commission are long gone. But I think the issue of annexation, all the way up Green Meadow, all the way up Benton Avenue, all the way up Montana Avenue. Is front and center, and folks ought to be thinking about that in a very proactive sort of way, and not just putting it off, putting it off. And putting it off, and so, since you've brought it forward, I know, City Manager, that this will be on our agenda going forward. And I thank you for that.
And thank you, Commissioner, any other comments or questions, Commissioner Dean?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, I agree with Commissioner Fever's comments, but I'm also wondering what does, I mean. Because City Manager, you alluded to this, that this is on our doorstep, and we will have to be a. Player in, you know, whatever happens in the next. I don't know, ten, twenty years, maybe not even twenty years, but what, what does the conversation look like? With the county, for example, and I mean, I really see like four. Well, three entities that have to be part of this, the city, the county and state. And the state, I'm gonna guess is gonna be needing to deal with this in a lot of other places than just Helena, obviously. So I guess what does that conversation look like going forward, and then also, I mean, Commissioner Fever mentioned this. People move, I mean, people buy in the valley because it's less expensive and because they're not having to pay for. City services. On, on the whole, I would, I would guess. And if you're buying a place because it's less expensive, that, you know, your, your property value is gonna decrease pretty significantly if you're not willing to make. Upgrades to keep the property safe. So I guess what does this look like going forward, because. I don't know, this, I mean, a lot of this, I think, could be issues that this current commission. And probably the next one does have to deal with.
Well, Mayor, may I, may I respond?
Please, go ahead.
Commissioner Dean, I, I, I think that you're right, and. First, Commissioner Fever, the reason you've never seen this map is we asked Ryan to put it together this week, so it's brand new. And I think. For our county partners, when I look around the state of Montana, they are more proactive than other counties. They're the only county in Montana that has a septic tank maintenance district in place. And that was, that was put into place in consultation years ago with the city. That the status quo is not sustainable, under present law, what can we do to improve the situation? And I think the county needs to be applauded for putting that district into place. In addition to that, and I'm not. At all familiar with the issues other than what I see from the outside looking in. But a lot of the factors that you reviewed this afternoon is why the county is having a zoning discussion right now. Outside the city limits, it has to do with water quality, land use, et cetera. I can't predict when. When this would all fall apart, but I can predict, I think, pretty accurately that the present growth pattern is unsustainable. At the level and density that has occurred, and we've already dealt with. Certain subdivisions that have failed and gone in and retrofitted them. Not that we have to retrofit the whole valley, and I think it becomes. A policy decision on behalf of the, the city commission, knowing full well that you got water quantity, water quality. And as we grow, we'll probably have to expand our treatment facilities, both on the clean water and the wastewater side. And that's, that's what our capital plans will help us do in terms of being proactive. So. I think that what we're trying to accomplish here today is give you background information in a context. So that we can continue talking as these various issues come your way throughout the years.
Thank you, Commissioner, Manager Burton. Director Lila, are you done?
Yes, sir.
Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, at this time I have no hands raised and I've received no written public comment on the side of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize, I was a little quick, I think, on the, my response earlier, I do have one written public comment, if I can read it into the record.
Please do.
From Jacob, Jacob Kuntz, thank you for presenting this information, the future of a vibrant Helena depends on the city finding ways to manage. Prudent, timely and sustained growth.
Are you done?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
And Ms. Opitz, you have the floor.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor, I, I had the hand raise on accident.
Oh, okay. Is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor, it appears I have no other public comment at this time.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any finer comments from the commission? Except Commissioner Dean. No, I'm joking. Any finer comments from the commission? If not, this meeting is adjourned.